Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Chatham Select Board Meeting of June 3, 2025. Let the record show, the meeting started promptly at 5:30 PM. I'll read what I need to read pursuant to Governor Healey's March 28, 2025 signing of Chapter Two of the Acts of 2025 extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 20. Until June 30, 2027, this meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 203-386-491-POUND, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, Xfinity Channel 1072, 1072, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as is possible. First order of business this evening is to establish a quorum. I will do so. Mr. Matters?
Present.
Ms. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Smith?
Present.
And Mr. Dykens is present as well. Second item is to approve the minutes of May 27, 2025. I'll take a motion.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Any comments, suggestions, edits on the minutes? Hearing seeing none, we'll take a vote. And Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And Mr. Dykens says aye. Now, it's time for public announcements and agenda item requests. Any agenda items on the board's behalf this evening or public announcements? Any public announcements or agenda item requests from the audience here and/or online? Any agenda item requests from anybody online? Okay, we'll move on here. This evening, we have a fairly abbreviated agenda, frankly. We have two public hearings with EverSource and Verizon. And then we also have our business agenda. We have a one-day alcohol license to Chatham Creative Arts Center. Amy Middleton will be here. And then we have a consideration of renewal of Nantucket fishweaver's license with Mr. Kurt Martin, presented by Coastal Resilience Director Catherine Ricks. So onward and upward, we'll go right to the public hearing. This is a public hearing, and I'll ask the clerk to please read the first notice.
Public hearing notice, the Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, June 3, 2025, in the large meeting room at Town Office Annex 261 George Rider Road, Chatham, Mass, and remotely via Microsoft Teams platform to consider a petition from Verizon New England, Inc., and N-Star Electric Company, DBA EverSource Energy to install one new pole numbered 51 over 6.5 located 20 feet east of the existing pole numbered 51 over 7, directly southeast of the intersection of D Pole Road and Hitching Post Road. The proposed pole will fall approximately four feet south of the sidewalk adjacent to Chatham Veterans Field. This petition is being requested by EverSource to increase the height of the cables on the proposed and nearby poles, as well as provide the distribution of intelligence and telecommunications for the transmission of high and low voltage electric current. The public is welcome to attend this meeting in person or participate via link at the meeting's posted agenda. All interested parties are encouraged to participate.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I do believe we have Robin Latour online from Verizon. Robin, if you could unmute yourself and comment on this application?
Yes, hi. Mike's on, too. I don't know, Mike, I know you had issues, so Mike was going to speak, but I can take over if Mike, if you're still having issues.
Hi, everyone. We're vendors for Verizon. And Verizon and EverSource jointly own these poles. EverSource has requested the new pole to, you know, help raise the low-hanging communication lines. They're pretty low, and it's right across the street from a fire station. And obviously, with the ladder trucks driving underneath these, there is fear of obviously grabbing hold of those cables and disconnecting them from the pole. So we're looking to raise those up and go with the taller pole.
Well, it certainly makes sense. Robin, anything to add to that comment?
Nope. Mike, what Mike said is true, so he's more of an expert on that, which is why he's speaking today, so.
Okay. All righty. Any comments or questions on the application from the board? Corey?
I mean, if there's any going to be public comment, or I'll make a motion.
Okay, well, we'll do. Any comment from the public on this application to raise the transmission lines? It's bordering Veterans Field. We've heard, see, no one with their hand up either here and/or online, so I will then turn back to the board for a motion.
I move approval of the installation of the pole as amended at our presentation.
In a second.
Second.
Thanks. Okay, we'll vote. Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And Mr. Dykens says aye as well. We have a second petition as well here, and I'll have the clerk read the petition as well from Verizon and N-Star Electric, doing business as EverSource Energy.
Public hearing notice, the Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, June 3, 2025, in the large meeting room at the Town Office Annex 261 George Rider Road, Chatham, Mass, and remotely via Microsoft Teams platform to consider a petition from Verizon New England, Inc., and N-Star Electric Company, DBA EverSource Energy to install one new midspan pole numbered 48 over 23.5 located 106 feet north of the existing pole numbered 48 over 24 on Barn Hill Road. Verizon is proposing to use 2M cable attachment to the proposed pole along Barn Hill Road. This petition is necessary to support permanent power at the request of the resident located at 351 Barn Hill Road in Chatham. The public is welcome to attend this in person and participate via link at the meeting's posted agenda. All interested parties are encouraged to participate.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Okay, off to either Robin and/or Michael again for any comment?
Yeah, Michael will be speaking on behalf, if he, he's on the road, he has another hearing, so if he pops out, then I will take over.
Yeah, we do have him online and with a visual.
Yep.
Yep, so this one is the homeowner at 350, is requesting an underground service to be fed from Ariel to Underground. In order to do that, EverSource has requested adding in a midspan pole. In order to accomplish that, they'll need to put a riser on that pole to make it go from there.
Just a correction, Mike, it's 351.
It's not 351. My bad, sorry. Working up memory here today. And that is the reason to just feed it, so it can go to an underground service to feed the per-
Lost it for a second, Mike.
Okay, I'll take over.
Thank you.
So the purpose for the install of this pole, the request of the customer at 351 Barn Hill Road for electrical service, due to the existing poles, there is no more room for any more service at those locations, so a new pole will have to be placed for service.
Sorry, I'm in a bad sig-
Yeah, you're really ready there, Mike, so we're gonna, we're gonna continue on.
Have too many risers already. And too many risers already at those poles, so they can't encase any more risers. So that is the reasoning for an additional pole.
Okay.
Okay, we have a lot of questions.
Okay, okay, I didn't, okay, just, we're gonna go to the board, then we'll go to the public, okay?
I just want a clarification, because the hearing notice says 351 Barn Hill, but the map says that it sits in front of 350 Barn Hill Road. What's the difference?
Who they're servicing? The service request came over from EverSource, but it's number 351 requesting it. But the utility right away where the pole line is, is on the opposite side of the road, so the pole location is approximately between 350 Barn Hill Road, as well as the corner home, which is number 149 on, I think it's Orleans Port Road, off memory?
Oceanport, it's Oceanport.
Oceanport, sorry.
Who's that? I don't know who's speaking, but, all right. And then there was a request to move it just slightly? Is that what we saw?
Yeah, in the packet, there's a memo or a letter suggesting that it be shifted slightly to the water side, or some, looking for the right letter here. Yep. The butter, again, a butter located at 350 Barn Hill has reached out to Verizon requesting a slight adjustment to the pole. The butter's requesting that the pole can be moved to the left a little more towards the water of the planned location due to being right in the sight view of her front yard. Can you speak on that at all?
Who?
I have all kinds of information that I got from Ethan at Verizon, so I do have some questions.
Okay, so please, please identify yourself, and this is a public hearing, and we'd love to hear from you.
Okay, thank you. It's Lois and Joe Duffy. We live at 350 Barn Hill. So there is a bunch of stuff kind of going on out there. So first, there's a yellow spray-painted circle.
Orange.
Orange, okay. And then there's all kinds of writing in the middle of the road. Then there's a stake. Now, after speaking to the gentleman named Ethan at Verizon, he insisted to me that the pole was going to be placed where the stake is. If that's the case, we don't really have a problem with it. However, if it's by this orange circle spray paint, that's a problem, because it's in our sightline. So that's the question. And also, I have no idea when this is going to be happening.
Okay, all right, thank you. Back to Verizon here.
Yeah, so they normally don't do circles in the middle of the road. As far as we know, they only staked it out, so I don't know what the circle in the middle of the road is.
It could be, was DigSafe, perhaps DigSafe went out there?
Yeah, I know there was another butter saying she was getting sewage work done, so I don't know if that's something to do with that.
So we-
I don't know.
They only place stakes only for the poles, so it would, stake only, I promise.
Okay.
So I just want to, I want the neighbors to be really clear about what's going on here, you guys, before we approve this. Then it doesn't, to me, it doesn't sound like they are, that they know what's going on, and where the pole's actually gonna go, and we certainly don't want it to invade their, you know, encroach on their sightlines. So I'm not sure if this is ready for primetime or not. I defer to wiser heads here, but.
Excuse me, could I say something out in the public land, too? Apologize for interrupting.
Yep, I didn't, I didn't see the hand go up, but please do, and you're, please identify yourself.
You know what, sorry, I didn't raise my hand. I'm technologically challenged here. My name is Press Romine. I'm the resident at 351 Barn Hill, who is requesting the power. I don't know that this will satisfy what you were just pointing out and the Duffy's question, but it was, it's our understanding from the contractor in Verizon that the pole would be going where the stake is. And, I mean, obviously, I'm not the one putting the pole in, so the people putting the pole in would have to verify that, but I do agree with, I guess it's, you know, Lois Duffy, who was just commenting that, you know, the stake is sort of further down the road, and maybe is, you know, beyond the line of sight, whereas the orange, the orange circle, and candidly, Lois, I don't know where the orange circle is, but there are lots of markings all over the street. But it was, anyway, it was our understanding that the pole was going where the stake is, which is further down, slightly further down the hill, towards Oceanport.
And we do have a picture that they sent us, you know, that they staked it in February.
You have that as well. So I think our concern is, obviously, nice to meet you, our neighbor. We absolutely, yeah, we absolutely don't want to have people not having power. That's not what we're looking at. If we can be, just made, rest assured that that pole is going where that stake is, I don't think we have a problem with it, because it's kind of hidden in those bushes, and it should not be any issue at all. But I feel pretty strongly I want somebody to kind of write that out for us, because if it's where that orange circle is, you would agree, it would be a big problem.
Okay.
Yes, it's where they stake, where they stake it. They don't do orange circles, so I don't know.
Okay, well, I just want something in writing about that.
Okay.
Corey, please.
Well, no, we can just simply condition just that it is, the pole is, it is installed at the stake location as of June 3, you know, 2025. You have a picture of it. We're all talking the same location.
Yes.
If the board wants to go to extra step, and I don't know this would be a hardship for all parties, it's just an onsite confirmation, if that is even something that can be done in a timely manner, if that's gonna be more of a hurdle, just to make sure all parties, whatever, you know, safeguard you want to put in place, it sounds like we'd take, at the very least, the stake, we're all in agreement where the stake is, or the parties are in agreement where the stake is. If everyone's comfortable, we just condition the installation on that. And we could take another step more, but I'll defer to the parties for their comfort level.
If it makes anybody happy, I could be down there Thursday morning and confirm the stake location and photograph it with, you know, the property owners, to make sure we're all on the same page.
So we're not gonna be down there till next week.
Okay. What I can do is, I can drop it, I can take a measurement as well from a fixed point, whether it's from the driveway at number 350, and, you know, say it's, you know, 50 feet, let's say, from that driveway to the new stake, and take a bunch of photographs to submit. And, you know, maybe I'll put in an additional stake, a different color, just to make sure that nobody moves it, and submit that to all, to make sure we're on the same page.
Yeah, we just want to be sure exactly where that stake is, is where that pole's gonna go. I don't want to wake up and have the pole, like, in front of my yard or something.
No, no.
Honest to God, like, where that pole is now is really not a problem for us. Where the stake is, it's perfectly fine.
Okay, sounds good.
I'll take some measurements and have a fixed point of reference to submit.
Any other public, any other public comment?
When is it?
Ms. Duffy?
I do.
Go ahead.
What's the date that they're proposing to put the pole in?
Well, the approval has to go through first before they can go to scheduling.
Lost them again. Robin, how soon would they schedule?
Yeah, so it all depends on the approval, and then they get the contractor together and the permitting, so nothing happens until the approval, because sometimes these don't get approved, so they don't set it up until that's completed. So once we get an approval, then it goes back to Verizon and EverSource, and we can get a potential date from them.
Okay. Mr. Matters, do you have a suggested motion, or?
I move approval of the installation of the pole as presented, and I'd like to also request that the applicant provide documentation, photographs, measurements, and confirmation of the pole location to all parties considered into this application.
And our approval is contingent upon the neighbor, the concerned neighbor being satisfied?
That's fine.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay, we'll take a vote. Any other comments? I think we're done with this one. Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens says aye as well, so please circle back with the Duffys and make sure that pole's going in the right place, you guys, okay?
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay.
Good evening.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is public comment on our business agenda. We have two items on our business agenda this evening. One-day alcohol license for the Chatham Creative Arts Center, Amy Middleton, and then also a consideration of renewal of Nantucket fishweaver's license with Mr. Kurt Martin. Is there any public comment on either of those business agenda items this evening? Hearing seeing none, we'll go on to the next item, which is our consideration of a special one-day alcohol license for Chatham Creative Arts Center. I think there's more than one day, but I think there are a bunch of days. Is Amy Middleton online, or? No, Amy, okay. Amy Middleton, are you online? All right, that's an issue, because you need to be present for this, so we're gonna, we're gonna move on from that unless Amy shows up by the end of our meeting. And the next item we have on our agenda is a consideration of renewal of the Nantucket fishweaver's license, Mr. Kurt Martin, and our Coastal Resilience Director, I believe, Catherine Ricks. There she is.
Good evening.
Hi, Catherine.
I'm Catherine Ricks, Coastal Resilience Director, and I'm here to request that you consider the renewal of the seven fishwear permits for Nantucket Sound Fishwears. These are five-year renewal permits. They've been renewed for decades, and owner Kurt Martin is here if there are any questions.
Okay, welcome, Mr. Martin, who we've seen you, what, every five years, is it, or thereabouts? I'll just open it up to the board for any questions they might have. We'll start with Ms. Davis.
I'm familiar with the permitting process for fishwears, and I don't see anything that's out of the ordinary. I think this is just the same copy of the copy kind of thing for years. And Kurt, I just want to say, I really appreciate that you're requesting to continue the licensing with the hopes that somebody will continue the fisheries. It's a beautiful fisheries, we both know that.
Sure.
And I don't want to get all Terry, but I will move approval of this at the right time.
Yeah, as long as they maintain all the equipment, and we might go again next year up in, you know, off of Osserville, so, yeah, but I'll keep maintaining, renewing them.
Mr. Matters?
No questions.
So did you have, you said any wiers this year?
I did not.
Okay.
Yeah, just was labor issues and so forth, but next year is a different year.
Mr. Smith?
Sure. How we doing, Kurt?
Good, Stuart. Congratulations on your position there.
Oh, thanks. I think, the, I just had a question, and I'm not even sure it's actually for you, but maybe it's for Catherine. The fees, just out of real curiosity, where do the fees come from?
So I was told that the state tells you what the fee's gonna be, and then the fee does go to the town, but it's set by the state. And I could not find it online, but I was given that fee.
Yeah, okay, I mean, I couldn't find it anywhere either.
Yeah, it's one of those, because it's so rare, I think they don't publish it online.
Oh, okay. And the other, and maybe Kurt, or even, or maybe Shereen, the wiers, do you light them, Kurt? Do you put lights on either end?
So east of Great Point, or is Great Island, is two lights, one inshore, one offshore, and west is three offshore, inshore, and middle. So yes, and then they have to let the Coast Guard know for the aids and aids navigation.
So they're, they get, looks like they have to be numbered?
Mm-hmm. A app has a designated number.
And the, and then each end gets lit, and maybe some radar reflectors? I'm just-
Exactly.
Thinking with our boater-
Yeah, no, the radar reflectors go on also.
Yeah. Our boaters might need that.
It's, so the last couple of years, setting them up, they've always gotten run through now.
Yeah.
And people have triple outboard boats and four outboards, and they go faster, and everything comes up quicker on them, so that has been an issue.
And a million years ago, we had a tragedy, so just trying to avoid that long before your arrival. I did notice that the, and I guess Shereen's right, that the, this must be copied over and over, because this chart predate, I mean, this must go back to the 60s.
Probably longer than that. I mean, one of the sites has been there since 1870.
Yeah.
So.
Well, maybe it goes back to 1870, I don't know, but it's old. I noticed that.
If they tear the church down in town, we won't be able to set it, because we won't know where it goes, because that's one of the land ranges.
Right, and some of the range markers are for structures that don't exist anymore, so, well, hopefully it becomes important, because hopefully you put your wiers back in. All right, thank you.
Kurt, I don't have any questions. Good luck, and I hope you can set them at some point in the future.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, motion, please.
Move approval of the renewal of Nantucket fishweaver's license to Kurt Martin. Move approval of the renewal of Nantucket fishweaver's license to Kurt Martin.
In a second.
In a second.
Okay, we'll take a vote. Matters?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And Mr. Dykens says aye. Good luck. Very well.
Thanks, Kurt.
Okay, that actually, is Amy Middleton online right now? Amy Middleton, okay. So that concludes our business this evening, Select Board. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Hello?
Hi, sorry. Mr. Dykens?
Yes, yes, please.
Sorry, I apologize for going backwards. I'll be really, really quick here. I was one of the parties involved in the discussion on the new pole going into 351 Barn Hill.
Yeah.
And, and I just. Sorry, I'm back. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. How can we help you? We have concluded that item.
Yeah, I apologize, I tried to get in right at the end there. Just a, probably an ignorant question, where you ended up on the issue, does it, does it mean that it has to come back to you for approval?
No, no, as long as the Duffys are satisfied with the stake, we're good to go.
And what evidence, I mean, does that mean that they have to be in touch with you, or who needs to be in touch with them?
Verizon needs to be in touch with the Duffys to make sure that it's being placed at the location of the stake, rather than the orange circle. Orange circle's a problem, stake is okay. And we have conditioned, that we conditioned our approval thereupon.
Okay, okay. Apologize for going backwards. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Motion to adjourn.
In a second.
Okay, Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens says aye, then we are adjourned at 5:57. Good night, Chad.